All right, I would like to call to order the August 24th, 2021 regular school board meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board of Education. If you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much for joining us tonight. We're very excited that you can be here with us and also excited for those of you who are able to follow along at home. Laura, if you wouldn't mind, we'd start with a roll call, please.
Grandland.
Present.
Mueller.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Samurai.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
And Superintendent Senvik.
Here.
All right, looks like everyone's here. I'd like to start by reading our mission statement and it's creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We'll move on to the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. So we'll start with an approval of tonight's agenda. Can I get a motion on that one?
Handle.
Lorian.
Second.
Second from Molly. Thank you. I need discussion on the agenda. All right, and we'll do a vote. And I always want to say roll call, but now we don't have to. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? All right, motion carries. We will move on to the announcements this week. September 6th, Monday, there's no school, which is, we're back, right? Because September 7th, Tuesday, is the start of the first quarter. September 14th, Tuesday at 5:00 PM is a school board subcommittee on policy here in the community room. September 14th at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting here in the community room. And September 21st, Tuesday at 6:00 PM, there's a school board professional development via Zoom. And September 28th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting again here in the community room. Move on to correspondence. And Superintendent Senvik, do you have any correspondence?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
All right, thank you. We'll now move on to communication from the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the board, or request that the administration follow up. And the board will not take action at this meeting, requests presented at this time. I want to remind people to remember to, remember our data privacy rules, that we ask that you not name any students or employees by name, or any indicator that would single them out. And we are going to start to really enforce the suggested three-minute rule at our meetings. So tonight is the night Lorian is actually going to serve as our timer for our people presenting. So be concise. If you have more to say, we would appreciate you sending us an email. You can email the entire board anytime. It doesn't have to be on a board night. So we'll move forward. Do you have one? Thank you for being patient, if you're watching online. Welcome back. We are now moving on to the consent agenda, which contains the personnel report from August 24th, 2021. Can I have a motion to move that forward? Motion for approval of the consent agenda, I guess is technically what I want to motion for.
So moved.
That was Laura.
Second.
Mary.
Yep.
And then any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? All right, motion carries. We'll move on to the acknowledgements of contributions. This is a very fun part of being the board chair. You get to read this. It's a lot to read, but it's always really encouraging. So I'm going to read this resolution, then I'm going to ask for a motion to move it forward. And it's acknowledgements of contributions. Where is Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district to bequest donations or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the board, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $3,200. Value and kind and the detailed background is donation of xylophone was made to Columbia Heights High School by Tim Rumel for student needs estimated value of $125. Donation of 125 backpacks with school supplies was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Immigrant and Refugee Committee of Anoka for student needs with an estimated value of $2,500. Donation of hand sanitizer and cleaning wipes was made to Valley View Elementary by Mark Emmy for student needs estimated value of $575. Total fiscal year 21, 2022 monetary contributions to date, $3,200. May I get a motion for the adoption of this resolution?
So moved.
Oh, we're giving that to Molly.
No, that was Molly.
Oh, it was Hala.
No, Molly, it was Molly.
It was Molly.
I was about to, but.
Oh, you had it on tip of my tongue. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, Hala. So eager. Discussion.
As always, thank you.
Yeah.
Much appreciated. Very much appreciated, yep. Always appreciated. Shows the investment that the community has.
For things as diverse as xylophone to hand sanitizer to backpacks, right? So that's really great. Thank you to everyone. All right, we'll do a, do a regular, no, this is a resolution, so we need a roll call vote, please.
Grandland.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Great. We'll move on to discussion, reports and information item, and we'll start with reports from members of the board. And the board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. And we will start with Lorian.
Since our last meeting, I attended a chair meeting last week followed by the work session, and I have had conversations with member Granland.
All right. Chair meeting prior to this meeting. Yep. We will then, we'll move on to Hala.
Since the last scheduled board meeting, I had several conversations with students and their families about how we're going to be holding school.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Mary.
So I've had a lot of caregivers reach out and students as well about COVID protocols and folks just curious about an online option for all levels of school. I've had several phone calls with Superintendent Senvik, as well as educators and other various admin. And then I was lucky enough to attend the Title I meeting last week at Valley View as a parent, which was delightful. And then I attended our marathon of a work session last week.
It was long. All right. We will move on to, hold on, my, again, it's loading in HTML, so I have to kind of read through the, but we're on Laura, I think.
Well, I attended the work session last week, and yes, it was a marathon, wasn't it? I hadn't, I hadn't remembered that it was that long until you mentioned it. I appreciate that. And I also attended the, my first Zoom listening session today, which was, was really, was really nice. It was very, in my opinion, it was, it was, it was really a great way of being able to talk to people. So I think that that is definitely a format that I'd like to see continued. So that, that's pretty much it for my report today.
All right, thank you. Molly.
Thanks. I also attended the work session last week, and as with most of you, many conversations with community members, students, parents, et cetera. Thank you.
All right. If I got this right, I attended the chair meeting prior to the work session last week. I attended the work session, also then that followed. I want to say there were three meetings in there, but I cannot remember in my mind why I had three meetings last week. Does anyone? Listening session tonight, which was great. Before that, we did have another chair meeting with Superintendent Senvik and Lorian. And then have also, like all of you, talked to many community members about kind of everything revolving around return to school. So I got everyone. Great. Superintendent Senvik, we'd like to hear from you.
All right. So I met with all of the superintendents in Anoka County to share COVID mitigating strategies, and this group will continue to meet and collaborate throughout the year. I also attended a Metro EXU Executive Committee meeting. The executive director Julie Frabe is retiring at the end of September, and the new executive director, John Schultz, comes to the EXU with many, many years of school leadership experience. So looking forward to working with him in the future. Last week, the administrative team participated in professional development on restorative practices, customer service, and literacy leadership. The team discussed the elements of heighten up, and we are very excited to start this school year. I do want to reiterate, however, that given that we are still in the midst of a pandemic, we are receiving new information and new guidance every few days, sometimes every day. And the Columbia Heights Public Schools staff are prioritizing in-person learning while preparing for different learning scenarios. And as we receive and have accurate information to provide out and communicate about the school year, we will be doing so to families and stakeholders. And I just want to say, you know, working with the team in this process, of course, I think everyone last spring was excited about where we were heading, and now we're facing some challenges. The staff have just been really impressive, their collaboration, their flexibility, their creativity. So we are continuing to, you know, maintain safety for all. I was able to have conversations with member Grandland, and thank you for your time.
All right. We'll move on to the City of Columbia Heights update. I know board member Biskins, was she able to join the meeting?
If she has not logged on to Zoom, I don't think she was able to.
I cannot see the full complement of folks in the Zoom meeting.
She, she just texted me right before the board meeting.
She has a fam, she may be having a family emergency, so she was unsure about whether or not she could make it. And that's what she asked us to share, if she was unable to make it.
And she sent her regrets. She would much rather be here.
All right, that makes sense. Typically, in terms of emergencies, people would rather not have them, right? Well, all the best to you. We'll move on from that agenda item, and we will move on to the introduction of the new high school principal, Todd Nguyen. I am excited to meet you. So come on into the Zoom meeting.
Okay, I'm here. Can you all hear me?
There he is.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Senvik. I chose to stay home, so thank you for that option. And will be in front of you with the presentation here next month, it sounds like. So I look forward to meeting you in person. But tonight, this is the best I can do. I want to tell you that I'm truly thankful for this opportunity, and it comes with a lot of responsibility that I definitely take serious. I've had an opportunity to meet with my team, my leadership team. I've met numerous teachers, quite a few family members, and parents, and kiddos, and just been in and out of the community this last few weeks, and it feels really, really good. And so I'm just feeling really lucky to be a Highlander, and we're starting with great positive momentum. So thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself to you, and definitely can answer any questions if you have any.
This board does love to ask questions, so this could be your shining moment, everyone. Member Grandland.
Okay, so I specialize in early childhood, so I have to ask this question. What is your favorite color?
Great.
No pressure to say blue and gold.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I don't know if you, I think that one or two of you read it on the interview, and I grew up in Shepherd, Montana, and our colors, kindergarten through 12th grade, were blue and gold. So, you know, this is fun to come full circle from when I grew up to how I want to finish my career. And so, you know, if I do a great job and can earn my keep, I'd like to finish up in blue and gold, just like I started.
Great answer. Thank you.
A great answer. At the risk of giving you two softball questions in a row, are you comfortable with the spelling of Highlander?
Still figuring out what a Highlander is. I did a lot of research and looked at mascots, and I'm a little confused here. So I am excited to keep on the tradition of the Highlanders, but it's been a, a learning curve for me is, I'd never heard of one before, so it's a new, new experience.
Hopefully, we can clear that up at the first football game. So I believe there's a kilt involved, so.
Yeah, it was weird that Superintendent Senvik asked me to wear that. He didn't. I'm just joking.
Molly.
Yeah, I just want to say welcome to Columbia Heights. As a Columbia Heights graduate, I will let you know that once upon a time, the mascot was a Scotty dog with a kilt on. Fun fact. So yes, very confusing. I think a lot of us are still confused about what a Highlander is, so you're not alone. Yes.
Was it an actual dog, like that wore a skit?
Yeah.
A dog costume?
Dog costume.
Oh, I wanted it to be a real dog.
No, a person inside of it, and it was huge, and.
So then whatever a Highlander is, it's better than that.
Well, thank you for that soft place to fall, admitting that you too were confused.
You're welcome. I'm brokenhearted that we don't still have that.
I would love to see that. Come back. It's in a closet somewhere.
My neighbor was the Highlander.
I do, the Highlander is. I have a more candid, not a, not a serious question, but maybe a less jovial question of like, what are you most excited about as you come into your role as principal of Columbia Heights High School?
You know, that's an easy answer for me at all times, and it's kids. It's, you know, I work with a lot of adults as a principal, but just to listen to the kids and listen to their stories. We have amazing kids. And I mean, I know I'm telling you stuff that you already have known and, and been around for a long time, but this community is filled with just amazing kids and amazing stories. Their narrative is really impressive. Granted, I'm surrounded by kids that are involved in activities right now. You know, they're taking some classes or some club activity and all the sports and kids coming in and out of the buildings. But I'm interested to see and hear from all the kids. And then what's really been fun for me has been my leadership team. And I really appreciate who I'm surrounded with. I, I feel comforted that I don't need to have all the answers because I definitely don't. And so they're, they're teaching me a lot as well, and they're indoctrinating me into this community. And so the staff's been amazing. I, I know I sound like rainbows and unicorns right now, but it's really how I feel. I've been doing this for 23 years, and I don't know if I've ever been so excited. Maybe that's just, I know my strengths and weaknesses isn't who I am as a person, maybe. I don't know. But at this point in my career, I don't know if I've ever been this excited. And so I can't wait to get started.
All right, thanks. More questions?
You took my question, so I'll just say welcome.
All right.
Yeah, welcome to Columbia Heights.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for joining us. Do you have any questions for us?
No, I do want to thank you. I, you know, I've been doing this for a while, and I understand how difficult your job is. And it's, it's, it's great leadership. And so thank you for what you're doing. Thanks for doing all the equity work that you're doing and supporting what we do in our schools. And so I just, I've, I've heard such great things. I'm really excited to get to know all of you.
All right, we'll take you up on that. Hopefully, we'll see you at the Scaling the Heights events coming up here over the next week or so.
Yeah, so when I say yes to things like this, I've said yes to that. I've said yes to some sort of polar plunge. I don't know what that means.
You already said yes to that. Oh, the boosters already got to him, guys. The boosters already got to him. As long as you jump in Highlander gear.
It's gonna be fun.
All right, polar plunge, you did it. Yes, we go by a different name here. It's the Fire and Ice Challen, no, it's the Fire and Ice Challenge, right? That's what we say here, but yes, great. All right. Well, thank you so much for joining us. We're excited to have you, and we'll see you in the upcoming weeks.
Sounds great. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. We'll move on to Director Takrol, Emily Gardner, our teacher and learning, teaching and learning coordinator, and Carrie, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
Trinianin.
Trinianin, wow. That's, that's amazingly uncomplicated for what I'm raising, reading. Our learning coordinator, and they're going to tell us about the curriculum cycle update.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Senvik. I'm here tonight to share about our annual curriculum cycle update. And I'm here with our teaching and learning coordinators, Emily Gardner and Carrie Trinianin. I've been practicing all day, so hopefully I got it, to share about some updates we have on our curriculum cycle. Starting with our mission of Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and focusing in on our core values of excellence, collaboration, and innovation tonight. This is an annual informational update. We come to the board once in a while. We'll be back after 2023 to come for approval of the curriculum cycle again. And as it was already approved, there's no governance question, just an update for tonight. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Carrie.
Good evening, Madam Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Senvik. According to Minnesota State Statute, school districts are to have a process for reviewing curriculum and instruction, and it's consistent with the Columbia Heights Strategic Plan. In 2021, 2022, we are beginning the study and preparation of 612 math and continuing to support K-12 English Language Arts and K-12 Social Studies, as well as other programming, where timelines were adjusted from MDE due to the implications of COVID-19. Our curriculum assumption, our curriculum cycle assumptions include alignment to state standards, supporting district goals in focused areas, and that curriculum adoptions will come in at or under budget. We will also continue to use Atlas Online Curriculum Mapping for standard alignment and horizontal and vertical alignment, so that we can ensure continuity of learning from class to class and grade level to grade level. We will continuously update Atlas so that curriculum is up to date and accessible for all teachers. And now I will pass it to Coordinator Gardner.
Thank you, Carrie, and Carrie's helper. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Senvik. So as we are looking at curriculum development, we have a process to engage as many stakeholders as possible. So beginning, of course, with teachers, having conversations about what is working and what is not, gathering data and getting their input, moving from teachers to our leadership teams, principals, and teaching and learning, who then look for trends in our data and in what we are finding out from teachers. From there, we bring it to our administrative team, who then makes recommendations. From there, it goes to our World's Best Workforce Leadership Team for inputs, and then on to the superintendent, and finally to the school board for approval. So looking back at our previous school year, a lot was accomplished in curriculum even throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Of course, transitioning to virtual instruction through Heights from Home Distance Learning, continuing to prioritize and align our standards across grade levels and content areas through our PLC work, which was very strong last year, even throughout the many challenges we faced. Supporting implementation of our new science standards, as well as our arts and PE implementation of new standards, reviewing resources, as Carrie said, for 612 ELA, aligning our pathways in career and technical education. And then our professional development pathways also supported content area teachers. Looking ahead to the coming school year, we have a lot planned. We're excited to be enhancing our literacy instructional framework in all schools, continuing support for those new science standards, preparing for K-12 ELA and social studies standards updates, planning for upcoming math standards. We're especially excited for this next one, introducing our education high school course, which will start in spring, spring's master of the coming school year. Supporting new STEM programming at North Park School for Innovation. We'll be expanding Project Lead the Way, so we will have Project Lead the Way at every level, elementary, middle, and high school, with Project Lead the Way at North Park CA and Columbia Heights High School. Aligning and supporting that middle school to high school Spanish transition, and continuing alignment in our transition grades, as well as books of the month for our district focus on literacy. And with that, we are ready for any questions you may have for us.
Questions? All right, well, no questions. On, oh, Laura?
I, I, I just want to say, it's a lot of work. I feel like I should have a lot of questions, but I think you've explained it really well, and we've been through these curriculum cycles before. So thank you.
Yeah, that's a great point, Laura. Thanks for stopping to remind us to, you know, there's a lot of hours and hours and hours of work that goes into a three-minute or whatever that was presentation. And so we're thankful that you were able to join us tonight and that you, do you know that hard work on behalf of our students? All right, well, thank you so much for presenting tonight. We will move on to the capital projects updates, and we will hear from Director Henneken.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Senvik. Give me one second here to get my stuff up. Okay, I think we should be seeing it. Okay. So this evening, I'll be talking about summer capital projects. I'm actually going to talk about our current projects and just kind of give you an update on, on where they're at and just forecasting for next summer. As previous years, we'll be coming to the board this fall into the winter for bid requests for some of these upcoming projects. As always, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And obviously, these projects have varying funding sources, and, you know, there's a lot of collaborative efforts and a lot of time and effort and money that goes into these projects. So they, they go across all of our core values. So again, this is just an informational item this evening. It's just an informational presentation. So current projects. So I think most of them are still quite very visible for everybody. We have a high school roof project that's going on right now that's being funded from long-term facility maintenance. We have a high school area separation project, and that project really came from our band room addition onto the high school. So when we...
Brian, we can no longer hear you. We heard when we, do you think he's still there?
I can see him.
Can you still hear me okay?
Now we can.
We heard you. You were just starting to address the, yep.
And we had to bring areas of the high school up to code.
Great, thank you.
And we had to create some two-hour fire separation walls throughout the building. And that project is still in process. The high school fax room, again, long-term facility maintenance project. And I should just talk less about this now and show you some pictures afterwards. So I'll try to pick a little bit quicker here. North Park Elementary windows, there was about 44 windows that still needed to be replaced at North Park after the bond referendum, long-term facility maintenance. And for that, and then Valley View Elementary boilers, which is a capital projects levy. Valley View didn't have boilers. It was getting its heat from Columbia Academy and, and similar to what Highland was previously, and we're completing that and creating a, implementing an independent boiler plant, so it's not dependent on Columbia Academy. So, so the high school roof project, I just did an aerial here. You can see the sections of roof that we're replacing. These sections are late 80s, early 90s roofs. And so that's currently in progress, and the completion date is August 2021. We had a little fun with the rainstorm that we had this morning, but the project's moving along, and, and it'll get completed by the end of the month. So the fax room, you can see in progress. But the great news is, considering in construction right now, delays are inevitable. The times on things are increasing daily sometimes, by not days, but by weeks and months. And, but we have all of our cabinets. They're getting installed. So we do, do feel that we still are set to have that completion of August 2021 for all of our, our main items. A very doubtful on our tables, but we do, we can put some temporary tables in the room and chairs for the kids to sit at until the, the permanent ones come. But, so that's, that's well underway, and. But so that's, that's well underway and, and looking good. Area separation, so one of the more major areas, this is a shot of the high school main entrance. And the high school main entrance used to have a kind of a curved outer wall and, and, but we had to redo that wall because it needed to be fire-rated. So this is one of the walls that has to be fire-rated. And so we had to replace basically everything, windows, door, everything had to be two-hour fire-rated. So plus, we're doing some secure entrance changes. So there will be a doorway from the vestibule into the high, main high school office, office, creating additional layers of security before people enter into the high school, similar to what we did at Columbia Academy and North Park Elementary. And that project is again slated to complete August 2021. So North Park Windows, tough to take a picture of new windows and say, ooh, ah, new windows. But so the picture on your left, you can see the windows above the door. So those stairwell windows at North Park Elementary, many of them, the framing was rusting out. They're single-pane windows, and many of them had been, you know, boarded up over the years. So you can see that four of the eight windows or sections there were boarded up on that stairwell. And you can see what it, what the new windows look like above or on the right-hand side. So you can imagine the amount of light and, well, they're thermal paint. So energy efficiency that these new windows are bringing to the building. So now that building has had all of its windows, including stairwells and classroom windows replaced. And that was actually completed, Punch List went through right at the end of July 2021. And then the boiler projects, and again, not too many people get excited about new boilers, but they look pretty fantastic. And we're excited to see that project on schedule and well ahead of heating season. So Valley View Elementary will no longer be reliant on Columbia Academy for its heat. It will be able to operate independently. So forecasting for next summer, so we do need to continue to work on some of the roofing at the high school. It was too much to do in one year, so we will have another roof project at the high school. Again, roofs, late 80s, early 90s that need to be replaced. We will be working on some site work at the high school. At all of our other buildings, we've, we've worked on separating buses and from parents and drop-off pickup. So we're working on a project in that area and some resurfacing for blacktop areas that haven't been worked on in many, many, many years. And then we'll have district HVAC projects, partly with federal funding, partly with LTFM, you know, working on improving areas in air filtration throughout the district. And so it's something that we've been working on for over a year now and putting this project together and stages that it'll take to get it done. And then we have our main gym floor and looking at the bleachers and the main gym floor and funding sources for that, Capital Projects Levy and other sources. So we're looking at some options there to complete that gym floor, which is in dire need of replacement. So those are forecasting some of our summer 2022. It's not that we don't have other projects that are happening, but those are the biggest ones that we have happening for the summer of 2022 that will, will potentially need to go, most likely need to go up for bid that the board will see me bringing forward later here. So that is it.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? Mary?
Not a question, but a comment. Brian, you said, Director Hennickens, you said no one would be excited about that boiler, but clearly anybody who has seen the setup at Columbia Academy and Valley View would be absolutely excited to see that. So it looks pretty beautiful. Thank you so much for all of your work with that and getting that set up and to your team, too. So that's really exciting.
I thought it kind of looked like a train.
It did, totally.
Yeah, you could tell the kids that. No, I'm kidding. Don't do that. Tell them it's a boiler. Laura?
Oh, yeah, actually, they're beautiful. They really are. I love the, I love the red boiler. I would, I would so totally put one in my basement, although it's probably bigger than my basement.
I was gonna say.
Actually, I had a question with regard to some of the, some of the, I guess you could say, the parking drop-off bus over at the high school. Are we, when do we expect to see maybe some ideas or plans with regards to how to make that a little safer?
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's something that we're still fine-tuning right now. So I just wanted to make sure that I forecasted it. You know, in all likelihood, I would say, you know, October, November timeframe is when we're going to be in a much more complete phase of what we, what we plan to do. There's multiple options. Some are better than others, and, and we're, we're definitely working through that. Of course, cost is always a factor during any of these conversations.
Thank you.
Molly?
Thank you. First of all, I, there's going to be a lot of excitement when everyone hears about the gym floor, right? That's been years in the making. We all know this, and I understand completely how difficult it will be to get done. It doesn't happen overnight, but I'm just curious, just because we lost so much gym time recently, how many months will that take and will that interfere with like the sports during the school year?
During the school year, no, it'll, it'll happen in the summer. And so we'll, it's a complete summer project, so. Most likely, talking about approximately six weeks, and that we'll have to close that gym down. And it just depends on, there's some factors that we haven't quite, quite finalized yet, which is, you know, the current installation, the gym floor, the original gym floor. How is it installed? We've put some holes in the floor. We have a company coming out to inspect that. If it's installed one way, it's going to take another week. If it's installed another way, then it's going to be faster and of course, take more time, cost more money. So there's things that we're still working on there, but it's, it's something we're working closely with Jake on. And, and yes, I've already heard lots of praises for finally moving this project forward. And, you know, it's not done yet, but people are absolutely very excited about it.
Thank you. I was a little bit nervous to ask that question, I'm not going to lie, because I was like, I don't know if I want to know the answer, but that makes me feel so much better and will be so much easier to answer questions from parents, coaches, players, et cetera. Thank you.
All right, Lauren, I see that virtual hand.
Thank you. Yeah, just real quick, I know you had mentioned the supply chain issues that you're dealing with, that we're all dealing with. How have the projects been in terms of, I mean, it sounds like timing, you're okay, but I know we had contingencies set up when we, you know, the amounts were approved. But in terms of project cost, budget, contingency with, you know, the, not only supply chain issues, but cost increases that we're seeing?
Yeah, great question. None of the projects are the same. So, you know, as far as the roof project goes, you know, it actually has been very good. Things are staying on track. And we've had a couple change orders with drains and some changes that we had to make, but very minimal, very good. Happy, very happy with that. Fax room, you know, we had to make a shift on tables because we couldn't get what we originally wanted. And I, very little impact in cost. Again, that project staying, staying where we anticipated it was going to be very minimal changes. Area separation, that one's a little bit harder. We've, we've definitely run into a few things there that were unexpected findings during inspections that new require, or I was going to say new requirements, but additional requirements that we may not have known about that we've had to kind of dive into and, and work on. So there's definitely going to be some additional costs there. That project is being funded out of kind of the final of the construction dollars and LTFM. So, and ours since the LTFM, and Capital Projects. So not, not a massive impact, but definitely at this point, but definitely an impact. There's still some outstanding things that we're still working on with that, that we're going to, or most likely going to carry that project on beyond August 21. Not, not the core of that project, the area separation, but there's some additional things that have been brought forward and, and smoke-stopping areas that are unrelated to our original project that we have to deal with in a separate project. And then the window project, again, was, was very good. And in, in general, very little findings. There was some additional asbestos abatement that we had to do there for some additional cost that's funded out of long-term facility maintenance. And then the Valley View Boiler project, actually honestly, is probably the best one out of all of them as far as, it's just been, it's been knock on wood, and I do have throw wood next to me. Going very, very well. The company that won the bid has been fantastic, and they're, they're way, they're, I want to say way ahead, because they're ahead of schedule, and they're doing, and they're doing really meticulous work, so very happy with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you. We appreciate that, Director Hennickens.
Thank you.
We'll move on to policy first reading, and that's me. The Subcommittee on Policy met two weeks ago, I believe. And it wasn't a huge list of things, but a couple of things did come up, and we would just like to bring to your attention. The first one was Policy 429, a remote working from home policy. This is actually new, from scratch policy. If you've read it and you're like, whoa, that doesn't answer this, this, and that question, this was a good time for us. This is where I wish we would have had a student member there, because it would have been an awesome time for them to learn about the distinction between policy and procedure. So a lot of the specific procedures we addressed are laid out in a separate non-policy. The policy, we tend to try to keep, just keep us on, in, on straight and narrow. And then the procedures are the everyday working, sort of like practices, different things. So take a look at that, and those will be available to the public for reading also on our website. So, and then we made some updates to the 819, the COVID-19 face covering policies. And that was largely removing the emergency order. It had said, with regards to the emergency order, we've removed it, making it clear that we could be nimble to new emergency orders, essentially like with masks and different recommendations and such. So you can take a look at the changes. Those were obviously less significant than a brand-new policy. Other members of the policy meeting, do I think of anything else to add? Okay, all right. Any questions? That's exciting, the train boiler. That was really cool. Again, when he said people don't get excited, I locked eyes with Lauren before I looked at the screen, like jokingly, and I looked at the screen and I went, whoa, those are pretty cool. So I felt kind of silly. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to our action items. In the first week, the first one is our Constitution Week Resolution. And welcome back, Emily Gardner, our Teaching and Learning Coordinator. And Carrie, tin, don't, don't say it. Tin, tin, tininin, tin, tininin. Tinin. You pronounced the J.
Trinyenin.
Trinyenin. Oh, thank you. I'm so sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. I am here tonight with Coordinator Gardner to ask the board, as part of state requirement, to adopt a resolution stating that Columbia Heights ISD 13 will celebrate Constitution Week from September 17th through September 23rd. And now I will hand it to Coordinator Gardner.
Thank you. Each year, our schools engage in activities to promote appreciation of the Constitution as the founding document for our democracy during this time. This year, teachers will again build lessons that deepen our students' knowledge and understanding of the content of the Constitution and its protection of our rights as citizens of the United States. We know this is a rather long resolution, and we are ready for any questions that you may have.
Actually, this is a rather short resolution, in my humble opinion. And before we do questions, I'm going to actually read the resolution, and then I'll open it. We'll do, I'll ask for a motion in a second, and then we'll have a discussion. So this half-page-long resolution reads, "Resolution Approving September 17th, Approving September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their prosperity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States. And whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to effectively support, preserve, and defend against all enemies. And whereas September 17th, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States American by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to afford legal or official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. And whereas the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated during Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2021, as designated by Proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance with Public Law 915. Now therefore be it resolved that Columbia Heights Independent School District Number 13 will hereby celebrate the week of September 17th to 23rd as Constitution Week." May I have a motion for this, to move this resolution forward?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Laura? All right, any questions or discussion on this one? This might be putting you on the spot, but do you happen to know kind of the history of how this came about? Does anyone know?
That is a really great question, and I do not know the answer to that, Carrie. I don't know if you do, as a former social studies teacher.
I, I don't know the history, how it came about. I do just remember, you know, each week, every year in September, celebrating it when I taught social studies. So that is a great question.
All right, just, that was a curiosity question. Sorry to put you on the spot there. I don't know the history of everything I do either. Any other questions? All right, we will have a roll call vote as this is a resolution.
Brandonlin?
Aye.
Euler?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye. All right, motion carries. Thank you so much for joining us. We'll move on to change to calendar days. Sorry, I'm going to follow my agenda here, and that will be Superintendent Stenbik.
Yes, thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board. This evening, I'm seeking an amendment to the school year calendar, just for the 2021, 22 school year. This is, the recommended change is in light of, you know, I can't say post-pandemic, but after last school year with our COVID year and looking at the priorities from both the federal government, the state government, local governments in terms of really wanting to support our students with academic acceleration, mental health supports, and all of those pieces. And so the recommendation that we're seeking approval for this evening is to change the following dates, October 8th, December 10th, March 11th, and May 13th to be half-day instructional days so that teacher teams and staff can really dive into creating interventions for students, analyzing the data, the growth, academic growth data as part of, you know, our Heighten Up program that we're working on. Students would have transportation to and from school. They would continue to have meals, both the breakfast and lunch. And then teachers would have approximately, you know, those two hours of guided, data-driven conversations and work to do as, you know, part of our academic acceleration. So with that, I'm seeking approval for the following, you know, for the dates that I've named to become Academic Acceleration Days, which is early release days. If approved, parents would be notified as soon as possible. So next week, we're starting with orientations, and then in September 7th is also orientation so that they would have, they would know all of the dates upfront. And that way, we would be able to work with parents who needed support. so that they would have, uh they would know all of the dates upfront. Um and that way, we would be able to work with parents who needed support um with making those accommodations.
Standing. All right, can we get a motion to approve the change to the calendar days?
So moved.
Laura, second?
Second.
Hala. Discussion. Lorian, did you virtually raise your hand? Because mine kicked me in and out of the system. Okay, great. It told me you did, but I figured that was a, yeah, right. Laura?
Uh yes, um at our work study, we had a quite a bit of discussion about how this would look. And um I I thought maybe perhaps the public might be interested, and this is kind of reviving a previous practice uh that we were unable to continue and um and it's and you were also saying that the the staff was actually extremely supportive of this as well. So would you be able to go into that?
Absolutely. Just to just to add to that, um we did connect with our teacher union, and they actually polled their members and had about 200 responses. Um and um the the results of that survey were highly in favor. We also took recommendations from the teachers' union on when when these dates should occur, what would be the most helpful um for them. And so mid-quarter was really the overwhelming um, you know, majority of the responses. So it's definitely a collaborative process. Thank you.
I know you mentioned this, but if you're a parent watching at home, I we had a course of long discussion about this that are like Laura mentioned, but you might ask the question, how is two taking two hours out of the classroom gonna help the students to do their academic acceleration? Do you want to just a brief synopsis on what you can do with that data?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is really about drilling down and collaborating with with your teammates, but really understanding um having the time to understand and pause to analyze the academic growth data. Um and that data then will inform instruction directly um for the rest of the quarter. Um you know, a 40-minute prep time at elementary um with all of the meetings and other things, or a staff meeting after school. It um it just hasn't been enough time, and we found in the past, when when substitute teachers were abundant, we could take these two hours and really made headway in the past. Um we found really great success. We called them data days back then. So in conversations, we thought, okay, we could do four days. So we we didn't want to take eight days, you know, eight half-days because then students would be missing more, but we thought we could do four.
Yeah. I like the idea of digging down in the data and hearing the unique needs of the classroom, or even as far as I know, individual students, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
Um that would guide the the learning of down to the individual student, what's best for them. That was really encouraging to me. It's an important and it it's not just then necessarily the the teacher has like some objective data to work from about.
Correct.
Yep. Other questions? All right. Uh hearing none, we'll do a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. We will move on to the superintendent contract recommendation, and I'm gonna turn that right over to Superintendent Stenvik.
Thank you, Chair Sieverson, members of the board. Um a little bit of context, you know, um just as the superintendent of Columbia Heights Public Schools, knowing the impact that COVID-19 had on our district financially, um and knowing that it's important that we remain fiscally responsible and that we remain within our fund balance um for a variety of reasons. Of course, being fiscally responsible and just um knowing that we're facing due to a variety of things, but including enrollment losses with the pandemic, that we're, you know, we're gonna be fine, we're gonna be great, and we're gonna heighten up and all of those good things. But just for this year right now, in this moment, we we really need to be fiscally responsible, and with that, um I'm seeking approval to freeze my base salary for the 2021-22 school year.
All right, thank you. Um I'm gonna read the motion again, just to be clear. The school board and Superintendent Zina Stenvik mutually agree to fee freeze her previously negotiated salary increase and accept a pay freeze for the 21-22 school year, the school board. Then we'd be voting to approve um performance payment authorized by the contract to Superintendent Stenvik. So I need uh we need a motion. Motion. Thanks, Lorian.
Second.
Mary? All right, discussion on that. Mary?
Leadership is um is incredibly important all the time, uh but especially now, and I think that this is such a it's such a big step um for you, and it's I don't know, it's really, I think I'm I'm impressed and I'm I'm happy and I'm sorry that that also has to be or is something that is considered, and um I just want you to know it's so appreciated that you would take this step. And I think, to be clear, we didn't we didn't ask this. You brought this to us. And that makes all the difference. So thank you so much for not just talking the talk, but but actually being there and and walking the walk, and um it's it's a really wonderful thing. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Mary.
Laura?
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Got my attention.
That thing there. Um when when you'd brought this up, I I seriously um wondered whether or not I should vote against this. It works so hard, but I but I do understand that symbolically, you're with the the whole district in the in this situation. I really want to thank you for this because um like Mary had said, I mean, it is um it is really showing your solidarity with with the community, and I I really do appreciate that. I I wish I could say no, honestly, but we'll we'll take it. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
I agree. I wish our funding was sufficient to not have to worry about that across the board in any of our contracts.
Yes.
And this is the contract we're talking about specifically, but it for for all educators.
I did it now, Laura, too.
And staff in general, not just in our district, but across the nation. I think school districts are all running into this. And so I I feel that that as we as we talk about how do you how do you pay somebody who works in such an important field well um as a national conversation, not just like a local us here? But thank you for that generous gift back to our school district.
Molly, I saw your hand.
Yeah, thank you, um Superintendent Stenvik. Um I just want to make sure and reiterate this, you know, this had already been negotiated, that she was going to get the increase. This was not a conversation even being had. It was completely unprompted and brought to us as a board together. So again, um and I'm sure, Lorian, are you gonna speak here? No? You used the word ethical leadership in our um meeting last week when we discussed this for the first time, when it was brought to us, and um truly is appreciated. And like everyone else said, I can't state, you know, enough what they've already said, but it's appreciated and and sad also. But thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Hala?
Yeah, I'm I know you're not used to me raising my hand. Usually, I just talk.
I don't have my glasses on because they're so foggy, so I'll try again.
I usually just talk. I don't raise my hand in wait, so. Um so I I really want to say thank you for this. This is really appreciated. It really um I'm gonna jump on the word that was used, ethical leadership. It really, really shows that, and it shows it's it's a reflection of your character as a leader. Oftentimes, when times get tough, we turn to staff, we make cuts, we do all these things. And for you to come forward and um ask us to approve this completely unprovoked, this is this is not a show for the public. This is not us asking the superintendent. This is like, she really just came.
Yeah, this isn't some sort of ploy for the public or whatever. This was prompted by Superintendent Stenvik.
I mean, I just, like it was said previously, I appreciate it, and at the same time, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Hala. I know it's probably awkward to sit here and hear this. It is hard to. Any more discussion? All right. Hearing done, we'll do a, this is not a resolution, so we'll do a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. Moving on, we will talk about the student part student participating in a school board subcommittee resolution. This one is exciting. Um we've been, I know the board has been talking about this, and it's been rolling around in the heads of board members since that predate me. Um so it's exciting to be a part of this change. Uh we're we're talking about the idea of adding um student members, juniors and seniors in high school, to our school board subcommittees, one in each, the policy subcommittee and the community engagement subcommittee. Um and I am gonna go ahead and read the resolution that we wrote, and then we will have a, I gotta find it first. Once again, the old eyes here, and I can't see far, and then read. I have to take off the glasses. So it's at that point in life, everyone. All right. "Resolution Regarding Student Participation in School Board Subcommittees. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 has two subcommittees, the Subcommittee on Policy and the Subcommittee for Community Engagement. Whereas the School Board Chair shall appoint the member of the Subcommittee and designate the chair. And whereas the School Board of Independent School District 13 finds value in student voice and participation, therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, that one high school student in 11th or 12th grade be selected to participate in each of the two subcommittees, that from the term that for the term is one year, and that each student will be selected by the Board of Independent School District Number 13 through an anonymous application process and appointed by the School Board Chair." The motion, oh, uh so that is our adoption, or that is the resolution, sorry. I should highlight where I need to stop reading, but I'm asking for a motion to move that resolution forward.
So moved.
Second. Laura was not gonna let anyone beat her to that punch, and then Molly, rightfully so, comes in with the second. Any discussion? Laura?
Thank you so much for bringing this forward and and seeing that. I I am so incredibly excited about about having student participation in in what is really the course of their education. Maybe symbolically, just a single student, but imagine the type of impact that they can have on the adults because they are looking at it in the world that we helped to create for them. They can be participate in this. Um even being able to give us an additional lens um in equity with policy or helping us with strategies for being able to communicate with those we're trying to serve. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. I really am very, very excited about this.
Molly?
Yeah, I I'm also very excited, and I hope, um I guess my hope is that people that are listening, that we start to really talk about it so that the the students are able to learn about this right away. And also, just in advance, the the school board cannot do this without the support of admin and teachers. So just a huge thank you in advance to all of the people that are gonna be helping with this, to support this. Thank you.
We have talked about, you know, a blind application process and different things like that. So we, as soon as we get this up and running, we want to get it out there as soon as we can to as many students as we can. So we are really hopeful that we'll hear from a good number of candidates who want to participate in this, and we are excited to hear from student voice. I even mentioned earlier how um, you know, at the it would have been interesting to pause and and have to really reflect on, okay, what is the difference between policy and procedure? And and just by the nature of writing a new, a brand-new policy, we ask those questions, and that's not something we do a lot. And so that I'm just excited for the opportunity to have that, and we uh just the idea that maybe, maybe, just maybe, will kind of catch the passion of a student to like engage in education, and you know, maybe they'll want to go on to become a teacher or a superintendent, but also maybe they'll want to go on to impact public policy that betters the educational system across the country. Who knows? It's it would be super exciting. So Laura?
I'm sorry, I don't want to monopolize all of this, but um but the the other thing, too, is is it's definitely uh one of the things we're really trying to do is that equity lens. So I I'm I'm looking forward to seeing how this process works and um and if there's ever any input on how we can remove more barriers to this process. I think that that's definitely something. We we try to make it as um as the application process needs to be as is as easy as possible so we have most accessibility, and I think we've made pretty good progress on that, but we'll be yeah, I'm I'm just removing barriers, please. If you're if you're interested, please, 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 please consider putting in an application.
I don't think we have it in here, but if you're a student watching, we are looking for, oh, I did read 11th, that one high school student. I did read that, right?
Yes, yes, and you do not need to be a Columbia Heights resident. You just need to be a Columbia Heights High School student. Yes.
All right, uh exciting times. We will move on to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it is a resolution. Thank you, Lorian. So many steps to this. If you were a student board member, you might have caught me on that one. And said, hey, Natty, that's a resolution. We need a roll call vote. Thank you, Laura.
Grenland?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Sieverson?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we will move on to board goals, and this is also something we talked about in our marathon uh meeting last week. Uh one of the longer ones we've had in a long time, but a lot of important topics and kind of a lot of fun topics, in my opinion. One of the things we talked about was school board goals. Each year, our board tries to create goals that encourage us in our own growth as school board members and to help push us forward as people that we will continue to learn and grow and stretch and not sit complacently. And so goals are helpful to us as specific ways to try to, um I guess, football analogy alert, move the ball forward. Uh so I'm gonna read through where we left these goals at our last meeting, and then I'll ask for a motion. Well, yeah, I'll read them, and then I'll ask for a motion to to move these goals forward. So Columbia Heights Public Schools School Board Goals for 21, 2021-2022. First goal, having a high regard for Columbia Heights student voice and participation. The board seeks to find ways to hear from students. The board will implement, monitor, and evaluate the outcomes of student representation and discuss and/or implement further means of hearing from students with regards to community engagement and governance. Two, the board will continue its focus on growth surrounding the topic of equity. We will learn through our third session with Dr. Anthony Mohammed and by reading and discussing his book, Overcoming the Achievement Gap Trap. We will implement this learning by creating an action plan and examine, well, it says, and examine of school board policies with an eye on equity, so we'll have to fix that there. Three, the school board desires to have a higher visibility amongst all stakeholders. The board will explore and implement ways to enhance visibility in our community. Can I get a motion to move these goals forward? So moved. Second?
Second.
Give that to Lorian. All right, discussion. We have an obvious typo there. Um but let's start with goal one, the kind of just keep a little order here. Is there anything in that that people are? Is this what we agreed upon? I was trying to take notes while we were talking.
And I think if anybody is listening, I mean, this was, we spent a lot of time.
We did.
On this last week, so.
Yeah.
Our not talking is maybe because we spent a lot of time.
Yep.
On this last week, and I think too for the the public, and we we talked about our role as board members, which involve um governance and policy and and community engagement, so really kind of focusing on what's our our policy goals, what's our community engagement goals? How do we tie that together to our district goals and Superintendent Stenvik's goals, and we as we look at equity and other things? So it's really kind of bringing some things full circle into into what we do. The other piece of this, especially as we talk about that student voice, is important. Um we did talk about, we've, you know, we just passed our resolution on having um a student on our subcommittees, but we don't want to stop there. So for us, it's to evaluate that, see how that's working, learn from that, and then find in in other ways that we may increase um student voice and participation in what we do. Um so I think when we look at these goals, and all of them, it's So I think when we look at these goals, in all of them, it's looking at what we're doing, and then looking for next steps.
Yeah. So we're good on one, number one, no wording changed? Okay, number two, any, is this what we had talked about? All right. Goal three, obviously.
Did you want to specify the typo?
We need to just make sure that.
Okay, where did I find it? And we'll implement this learning by creating.
And examine.
Yeah, and examine school board policies with an eye on equity. Just take it out.
Of, okay, so we'll make a note of the change of the, removing the word one, so that sentence, or of, the sentence will read, beginning at we, we will implement this learning by creating an action plan and examine school board policies with an eye on equity, correct?
Aye, also, there's an extra space between will and implement.
All right, I'll trust you on that. Are you catching all these, Dawn? Okay, anything else?
I gotta say, I like how you caught an extra space.
I gotta say.
It's the Subcommittee on Policy.
The Subcommittee on Policy should ask the very important and highly controversial, should there be two spaces after the period question, which we do not have time nor scope to examine here.
Well, I'm partial to two, but, okay.
I am told by my younger coworkers that that is old school.
It's old school, but it makes it easier to see. Dissertation time, they said it's old, but it's easier for visibility.
All right, well, as school board chair here, I totally derailed us, now I have to rerail us.
Taking the space out makes it a little bit shorter, so that's always good for me.
Member Palmer, I'm rerailing us. All right, okay, number three, as, as is. Dawn, should I reread the full goals, or is, are those amendments clear? Okay, so we're good to take a vote here, then? Reread? No, no reread, okay. Any other discussion before we take a vote? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? All right, motion carries, great. We'll move on to board topics. Things coming up in the community would be beginning of the school year, we're starting to hear about open houses and different things like that.
Yeah, so next week, orientations and open houses, and just a reminder, September 7th, Tuesday, the day after Labor Day, is a, an orientation day at each of the schools, so reach out to your, read the newsletters from the school principals, or reach out to them for specifics, and then, September 8th is the start of the school year.
All right, and as always, if people are confused or have questions, we encourage you to reach out to your school's administrators, correct? Your specific school administrators for questions, and you can do that by email, or assume by calling the office during business hours, or leaving a voicemail?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. That was my only board topic, and excited to welcome back the teachers, and beginning tomorrow, actually welcome the new teachers, that's something that I'm excited to do tomorrow morning, wow, right in early, first day of school, can you imagine? Those teachers are at home, and they're thinking, some of these are first-time teachers, they're at home, and they're like, it's gonna feel like first day of school for them, like first job, it could be their first job out of college.
Wow, no pressure.
Remember, remember getting your first full-time job, do you guys remember that even? It's kind of vague in my mind, but.
I don't remember. Fair, I mean, yeah, it was.
That's crazy, how exciting, they're probably picking out their outfit, and, you know, did you, did you ever do that when you were a kid, and you had just the right matching socks in the 80s?
Just you and Natty.
Bell bottoms and peasant shirts.
Oh, I had like purple and neon yellow socks, did you, also, just multiple pairs of socks at once. I'm rerailing us, after my own derailment, again, any more board topics that don't include your socks in junior high? Molly, then Mary.
I was just gonna do a reminder that staff are in the buildings next week, so social workers, correct, would be starting, is that true?
Yes.
And so, with everything that has gone on, I just encourage parents to reach out to those staff ahead of time, so that if there's things that need to be addressed that first week of school, the staff are aware. I think that everybody understands there's a lot that's happened, and that those social workers can be really critical to helping that first week of school transition back.
Great, that's a good word. Mary?
So I checked, actually, I should have said this earlier, I checked in with Lauren today, but there, we received an email from Representative Omar's office today, and she wanted a, one of us to connect with the office and check in about, you know, what, what's happening in our district, and what's happening in our schools, and what's needed, and what sort of supports can she, her office provide, and so, wondering who was going to field that meeting, or if anybody had a strong desire to field that.
I've, I've never spoken with her, so I'd be happy to, I was, I was hoping to reply if people are comfortable with that, I think more than one of us probably can, we just can't create a quorum, or a string quorum, so just being careful to not do that. So people are okay with me replying, or you guys, you've had an opportunity to meet with her in the past, correct?
Yep, absolutely.
Anybody else have a high desire to, I don't need to do it as the board chair?
You can do it, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. All right, great, I'll respond to her person, her rep, the rep of the rep?
The, I think it's the district coordinator or something?
I like rep of the rep, kind of like any other, other.
Can I comment on that too? I know Mary and I talked briefly about this, this is also something that she has interest in, just from, you know, what her thought, you know, where she.
Yeah, if you want to reach out, go ahead.
But anyway, if the two of you collaborate too.
We could do that, that's definitely not a quorum.
It's not a quorum.
That is definitely not a quorum. Let's do it together.
Okay.
Do you want to initiate a response, then, and?
I will leave that to you.
All right, sounds good, okay. Great, thanks for sharing that, yeah, of course, I want to, yeah.
I mean, it's fine, so.
Great.
I think it'd be good to have two people.
I love collaboration, it's my fave.
Same z's.
Other, other others, there it is. Is anyone really glad we're not talking about jumping in frozen lakes yet? All right. Hearing no other others, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:27 PM.